And I would just like to welcome everybody to the special session on neglected areas of disaster, loss and damage. It's absolutely wonderful to have every Friday with us from all around the world. This is one of the, it's a very exciting special session. And with the excitement, unfortunately, they do come a few rules. Just for the speakers and for the special session itself. The, I'm Julian Katsia, I'm the ADN administrative coordinator. I've been with ADN for over a year now. As you can see from the bio and housekeeping on the screen over there. They put me in future leaders for Avoidable Deaths Network. Please, moving forward with some housekeeping rules, this special session will be recorded. So if you do not want to be seen or anything on the special session, please keep your camera off. We'd also just like to ask everybody to please remain muted at all times. To allow the speakers to give, provide their presentations. Along with this, I'd like you to, I'd like to pass you across to Dr. Yazidi. From Macarary University in Uganda. And he will be one of our chairs for the special session. And with that, I'd like to pass you across to Dr. Yazidi.
Thank you very much. I'm, I'm, I'm with you Julian, many, many thanks for introducing this.
Thank you, doctor.
Can I request to share one or two slides?
Yes, certainly, certainly, I will take my slides offline.
Yes, there, are you able to see my slides that I'm sharing?
Excellent, can view them perfectly.
Yes, but once again, many thanks Julian for the introduction. Extremely happy to be here, I'm here with two coats, although I don't look to be putting on a coat. One is that I'm the coordinator for the ADN Hub in Uganda, which is sponsoring or cosponsoring. This session. And then I am also the chairperson of the organizing committee. Of the Gorilla Conference under which this special session is organized. So I took this opportunity to welcome you all, the participants from outside. In a special way, I take the opportunity to welcome the speakers, the excellent list of speakers we have today. And then lastly, in a special way, I also take the opportunity to thank Hidjyuki and Nibedita. The leaders of ADN who have done massive work to make sure that ADN gets grounded. And this session is part and parcel of the many activities that are organized. I'm sure when Nibedita is talking and the Yuki, they will give some more insights about that. I have already indicated that this session is part and parcel of the Gorilla Conference. And we can look at it in one or two ways as Gorilla Conference, we have. Had three sort of appetizing sessions, two of them are really training activities for. The younger scholars to do with use of technology. But this one is more focused on, you know, issues to do with disasters, issues to do with hazards, issues to do. With resilience as we may see in the talks that are coming. Talking about the conference. Then we can easily anchor this under the session which is focusing on hazard. Nature-based solutions and, and, and you know, overall resilience building of our communities. This is just a slide of, you know, beautiful faces. Which are here today, some are not here, like you see Professor Hayko on the left-hand side of the image. I have to note that he's going to give a keynote address to the Gorilla Conference, so. We are happy, or I am happy on behalf of the organizing committee to see this ecosystem of people. Dedicating their time, they are dedicating their resources to make sure that they are contributing. To the conference progress, but overall really, we are looking at our service as. Crafting or looking for solutions that can solve those global challenges. The world is out there looking for solutions, the world is out. A contribution towards resolving all sorts of complex problems, sometimes. I even feel that they are asking for too much, but when things have been said, then it is our duty. To make sure that through collaboration, through near knowledge sharing, through. Co-creation of knowledge, we are able to make a contribution within our spaces and the time we have. Sharing knowledge that can transform societies. Just a little bit more of the Gorilla Conference, we are organizing it around eight themes. We don't have time to go through all of them, but like I said. Broadly, it is looking at the global development agenda twenty thirty in all its ways. We've, we know this, we've heard about this, just recently in COP. Issues we are coming out, some progresses realized there. Other areas are still lagging, but if we continue the effort together. Then hopefully, by the time we come to twenty thirty, we would have filled our spaces. I already mentioned that this session, together with other presentations coming from the ADN network. Will contribute towards a range of sub-themes here. But more specifically, those which are looking at hazards. Climate change, degradation and resilience building in total. We have participants from many countries, including India, would have been, would have had many, but there are always challenges of. Of, of funding, so hopefully. With these conversations, hope next time in two years, I'm looking forward to the opportunity. To have all of you in Kampala, so I'm extending the invitation quite early. When we come back, back here to Uganda specifically, the ADN Hub is involved in a number of activities. There, there is just no time right now to illustrate that. But I have to say that we are deeply anchored in issues of. Disaster resilience societies or communities, so to say. That's our focus, and when you look at our map here, this is just picked from. The INFORM which does this national level analysis. Uganda is rated at around six, so meaning that we have critical issues that we need to resolve. We can't resolve those alone, we need partnerships, we need all of you, we can create knowledge together. Some time back, we are discussing as ADN, as you know, what information can you pick from newspapers on COVID nineteen? And how can that help to inform decision make? The things that you get through these kind of gatherings. So from my point of view, I'm looking at the opportunity. Of course, to give information to all the participants, but most importantly. To connect in a much stronger and better way with the speakers, but also the participants. Let me hope Nibedita that we are also taking record of who is present today. That aside, I will end with a few beautiful images from Uganda, beautiful landscape here, as you can see lots of. Socioecological issues that can be addressed from here. It is a landscape which is going through perennial floods, landslides. As people get their living and livelihoods from those areas, it's the same landscape illustrated. Image that's. Where you do have multiple hazard. All sorts of floods down there and you have landslades up there, and that's what we are grappling with. That's where we need your attention, once again, welcome to Uganda in absentia. And looking forward to fruitful discussions in this session. I submit coordinator and moderator.
Thank you very much, Yazidi. So can I have my slides up? Thank you very much, Yazidi. Thank you. Yep, thank you. My name is Nibedita Roy Bennett, I'm an associate professor in risk management, based at the University of Leicester School of Business. Dr. Hidjyuki Shirushita, Hidjyuki, you can wave, Dr. Hidjyuki Shirushita, and I founded the Avoidable Deaths Network. First of all, I would really like to thank the audience who have joined us for this special session. On the neglected areas of disaster loss and damage. I would also like to thank Dr. Yazidi Bamuthatse. He is one of the leading scientific members. Of the Second International Conference on Geographical Science for Resilient Communities, Ecosystems and Livelihoods. Under the Global Environmental Change, also known as Gorilla Conference, I quite like that acronym, Gorilla Conference. And Dr. Yazidi, as you have heard, is the lead of the ADN Uganda Hub based at Macarary University. If we could go back to the first slide, please. The previous one. Yeah, and then we, yeah, sorry, we can go to the second one, that's all right, thank you, that second one, keep going. Next. That's it, thank you. So on this very special day, we have the pleasure to be the company of the best scientists. Practitioners, policy influencers, policy influence and thought leaders for disaster loss and damage. So we have Professor Anil Gupta from the National Institute of Disaster Management of India. The Right Honourable Sean Edward, the Minister of Education, Sustainable Development. Innovation, Science, Technology and Vocational Training of Saint Lucia. We have Ms. Aliza Ayas, UN Goodwill Ambassador and Climate Action Society of Pakistan. So unfortunately, she is traveling at the moment, so we will be uploading her recording very soon. Then we have Professor Gulam Rasool from the International University of Business Agriculture and Technology, Bangladesh. We have Mr. Samuel Akera from the United Nations Development Programme or UNDP Ethiopia. And then we have Mr. Rahul Sangupta from United Nations Disaster Risk Reduction Office. Based in Bonn in, in Germany. A big thank you to all our esteemed speakers for accepting our invitation to speak today. The expert panel will tackle some of the difficult questions. Of the second half of the twenty-first century related to the neglected areas of disaster loss and damage. That do not receive much attention. This includes direct and indirect losses as well as a cascading effect. On people's health, nutrition, lives and livelihoods. Limits of coping and adaptation from recurrent loss of livelihoods and depletion of natural resources. Capacity building challenges, needs for local and national actors for tracking loss and damage. Strengthening governance for loss and damage. And understanding loss and damage at the intersection of sustainable development goals, SEDI framework. Climate change protocol and health emergency disaster risk management framework. According to the GFDRR report published in twenty ten, let me give you the definition of damage and loss, and I quote. Damage is the total or partial destruction of physical assets existing in the affected area. Damage occurs during and immediately after the disaster is measured. In physical units. Its monetary value is expressed in terms of replacement costs according to prices prevailing just before the event. Losses, on the other hand, means changes in economic flows arising from the disaster. They occur until full economic recovery and reconstruction is achieved. In some cases lasting for several years. Typical losses include the decline in output in productive sectors. Lower revenues and higher operational costs in the provision of services. Also considered losses are the unexpected expenditures to meet humanitarian needs. During the post-disaster emergency phase, losses are expressed in current values. Unquote, the value of the damage is used as the basis for estimating reconstruction needs. While the value and type of losses provide the means for estimating the overall socioeconomic impact. Of the disaster and the need for economic recovery. Now, I am sure that our experts, based on their research and evidence. Will be able to throw light on the challenges and opportunities in the ways the current disaster loss. And damages are captured at local and national levels. The recognition of the urgency of scaling up action for disaster loss and damage. For developing countries has dominated many COP meetings for over a decade. It was in November last month at COP twenty-seven in Sharm El Sheikh in Egypt. That the disaster loss and damage took a center stage. With the decision to establish a disaster loss and damage fund associated with climate change impacts. Now, within two weeks of COP twenty-seven. The UNDRR Bonn Office, World Meteorological Organization and UNDP came together. To convene a historic, I would say so, a two-day-long forum, global forum. On losses and damages, data and tracking. On behalf of the ADN team, I have the privilege to attend this global forum on twenty-ninth and thirtieth of November. The head of UNDRR Bonn Office, Dr. Animesh Kumar, raised some really, really interesting questions. And I share a few questions with you today. He asked, do we know how much we are losing? What are we losing? Are we losing at the national level? Or are we losing at the local level? And if so, how do we track those losses? Now, Avoidable Deaths Network is interested in reducing human loss, both a direct and indirect. By understanding the causes and circumstances that lead to deaths. I'm sorry about my dog, he's trying to join with me. All of a sudden, he's just decided to bark. So we need to know the causes and circumstances of death so that. We can put in place context-specific interventions to save lives. Now, to do this, we also need a very sound, very sound reporting and a death recording system. At the moment, this is not happening. And it is not happening in many low and middle income countries, including India, where I, where I have been working, you know, for my research. Especially in the state of Orissa and few other states of India. In India especially, nearly eighty percentage of deaths take place at home. And these deaths do not have medical certification of causes of deaths. So we really don't know what is, what are the circumstances that are leading to this death. So we need to improve our methods, we need to improve our mechanisms to capture and track disaster loss and damage. At the village level so that we can understand the actual cost of loss to promote prosperity and sustainable development. Now, before I invite our expert panel, let me introduce the Avoidable Deaths Framework very briefly. So we can move to the next one, thank you. So ADN is a diverse and dynamic global membership network of experts, practitioners, policymakers and researchers. Interested in avoiding human deaths from natural hazards. Naturally triggered technological hazards and human induced hazards in the low and middle income countries. We can go to the next one. We are often misunderstood as an NGO. So Julian, we can go to the next slide, please, thank you. So ADN is often misunderstood as an NGO trust, but we, we are not, so we are just a global network. Based at the universities of Leicester in the UK and Kansai University in Japan. This is a joint enterprise and it's led in collaboration with the regional coordinators such as Dr. Yazidi Bamuthatse in Uganda. And Leicester offers a distance learning program called MSC in Risk Crisis and Disaster Management. The program is delivered online and is flexible, it's an executive program, and I am the program director. We are, the, the admission is open for the February intake. If anybody here in the audience is interested in taking the course, please feel free to drop me an email. Now, Kansai University also offers a number of courses, that is BA and BSc in Safety Sciences. Please feel free to contact Dr. Hidjyuki Shirushita, and we will be more than happy to give you more information on these two courses. We can go to the next slide. So what is the purpose of Avoidable Deaths Network? So Avoidable Deaths, Deaths Network exists to help policymakers, researchers and practitioners make better decisions to save lives. And reduce injuries to achieve sustainable development. Our purpose is aligned, we can go to the next slide, our purpose, purpose is aligned with the United Nations SEDI Frameworks targets. A and B, target A is to reduce disaster deaths by twenty thirty. Target P is to reduce the number of people affected by disasters by twenty thirty. Now, these two targets work at the interface with several sustainable development goals. Including number three, eleven, thirteen and seventeen. Now, we are very proud to say that Avoidable Deaths Network. Is part of the United Nations Office for Disaster Residuptions SEDI Framework voluntary platform. And our activities and the research projects that we do are, are all up on the SEDI framework, SEDI platform website. So you can follow us there as well. We can move to the next one. So what do we do to achieve our purpose and vision? Currently, we are doing six interrelated activities. Given the constraint of time, I shall not go into detail of these activities at all. These activities are all up on our website in our annual report. But for the, for today's special sessions, I think the first two activities are relevant, which is to do with the special sessions. We can move to the next one. So we launched the first special session actually, in twenty twenty, on fourth of December, at the first Gorilla Conference in Macarary University. Since then, we have had eleven special sessions across the globe, and today's is the twelfth special session. The aims of the special sessions are twofold, first, their knowledge exchange. And engagement webinars delivered virtually to the public for free. With the aim to raise the awareness of concept of avoidable deaths and their avoidance, so theoretical or practical solutions or both. Second, the aim of the, this special sessions is also to raise awareness to those deaths that are often not on the mainstream. For instance, our previous special sessions have raised awareness on deaths from nutritional crisis. From dog bites, snake bites, scavenging, and also drowning deaths. We can move to the next one. Now, if you have not joined Avoidable Deaths Network, please join. And my colleague Lauren will drop the link, how to join, it takes literally a few seconds, it's free. And yeah, and we are currently capturing the impact of our special sessions. For this, we will run two polls, we will launch the first poll now. So Dr. Hidjyuki Shirushita will run the, run both the polls, so Hidjyuki, may I request you to run the first one, please? And the second poll will take place after the last speaker's talk. So with that note, I am going to thank all the audiences once again, thank our esteemed speakers. And thank you for joining our special session, and I'm very sorry about the background noise of my dog. So thank you once again for listening. Hidjyuki, over to you.
So Nibedita, are we going to take a group picture before the running?
Yeah, we will take a group picture just after the, 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 his excellency's, you know, the Right Honourable Sean's speech. So the minister hasn't come up yet, is that all right?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, okay, right, so yes, thank you very much for everyone to joining our special session today. My name is Hidjyuki Shirushita, I am also Llamada founding president of ADN. So, okay, so we always ask the participant to participate to pause in each special session. This is not for evaluating the speakers at all, but for measuring the impact of special sessions. So we have first poll at the beginning of the session and second poll at the end, as Nibedita mentioned. Then we will compare the result from two polls and the results will be shared at ADN website later, so you can see the results. Now, I am going to launch the past poll, so please vote your thoughts, thank you.
So Hidjyuki. While the poll continues, Professor Gupta will leave, so I think it's a good idea, I think Lauren has just informed me the minister is here. So we might as well take the picture after the poll result.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
So sixty-seven percent? So please vote your thought if you haven't done it. So at the moment, we have sixty-seven percent participation.
Do you want to give seventy percent?
Yeah, yeah, let us wait a minute. Oh, yeah. All right, so, oh, seventy-seven percent.
I think you can, another three percent will hit your benchmark that you usually use eighty percent.
Maybe, yeah, maybe one more. Right. That's three minutes, so yeah, I think we should finish now, yeah, thank you very much for your participation, very much. Me and Paul. Pretty quickly. Sure. Result with you. See, built, oh, question number one, and it is. Question number two, yeah. Or ADN website, we will see, we will show you know, how to say comparison between before and after, yeah, it's a bit better to. Easy to, you know, the compare, the result. Bring, be found up. Okay, thank you very much, so, yeah. So Nibedita, over to you.
Yeah, thank you very much, Hidjyuki, let us have a photo, if that is all right. If that is alright. So Lauren, do you want to take it over from here?
Yep. So if everyone who's willing to, that would be great. And I'll just spend a minute taking photos. So smile if, if you like. Okay, thank you. You can move on now.
Okay, so, um, Hideki, over to you to, I think it's your time to welcome our first speaker, Professor Anil Gupta.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much, Nivedita. So yes, yeah, let me introduce first, uh, speaker of today's special session. So let me introduce Professor Anil Gupta from National Institute of Disaster Management India. So Professor Anil Gupta is a resident and sustainability strategist with around three decades experience in diverse environment, working with governments, corporate, academia, research and international cooperation. He is a director of project and center of excellence, head of division and e-learning and media portfolio, international corporation, technical advisory and consultancy service as full professor of India's National Institute of Disaster Management at New Delhi. He is known as officers for central ministries, supported, uh, states in policy, advocacy, planning and capacity building and coordinated central sector scheme for Gujarat, Arunachal, Pradhish, Daman and D U D N H. So he has credit of more than one hundred eighty publications, including books, manuals, policy papers, high-impact journal papers and articles referred globally. So, yeah, uh, Professor Anil Gupta, the pro is yours.
Thank you for your generous introduction and first of all, my thanks to Dr. Nivedita for, uh, uh, your kind invitation and thanks to the ADN, uh, network for taking this very, very strategically uh, important and I would say very, very timely, uh, initiative. Uh, in fact, uh, the discussion on loss and damage is not a new. Uh, in fact, past two COP, uh, also, they, uh, they, uh, had the reference of loss and damage related issues and they were discussions at different forums, but in a segregated way. Now COP twenty-seven actually brought this as a, one of the core focus. Uh, while I'll be, uh, sharing India's experience, uh, and the current situation also. I find that, uh, there are, uh, few issues which are common for many countries. Uh, I have, uh, I think, uh, six or seven points. Uh, I am not using any PowerPoint though I had, uh, prepared a PowerPoint, but then I decided to speak extempore. Uh, first thing that until very recently, uh, our, uh, we, we have a federal system. So the assessments for loss and damage primarily, uh, comes at the responsibility of the state or the provincial governments. And the role of central government or the federal administration is advisory in nature. Uh, but, uh, there has been a lack of systemic or the scientific approach in, uh, the assessments of loss and damage, uh, particularly related with, uh, disasters until two thousand twenty. Just two years back, we could come up with a systemic approach for, uh, for this thing. And a new tool that is called PDNA, post-disaster damage and needs assessment that, that has come. Uh, but the issue is that the PDNA is primarily aimed at uh, making an assessment of damages, uh, towards, uh, developing effective planning for relief as well as the situation, uh, needs assessment. So, so, uh, this is, this is, uh, very specific to, to mention here. Second point, uh, that comes when we talk about the economic and non-economic losses perspectives. Uh, so since this, uh, focusing on the immediate kind of damages and, uh, to some extent it touches about the losses. So, uh, so, uh, the recognition of various pathways, uh, which are important for secondary tertiary or higher order impacts of a disaster, so that are seldom undertaken. Uh, and in other terms, I would say that the consequence, uh, they're basically capturing what shall be the consequence. Uh, and that, that may be even, uh, maybe in a medium term or a long term basis. So that, that is one of the, another gap area. Third aspect, uh, I would like to refer here that in India, the damage assessments, uh, in, in the post-disaster scenarios, when a disaster has already occurred, are primarily conducted by the government agencies. And in many cases, as technical expertise, the World Bank, ADB or UN agencies come up as a technical support system. Uh, but, uh, there has not been significant effort to, to, uh, to make a kind of a, uh, system, uh, for ex ante assessments. Uh, so, so kind of a anticipatory, uh, scenario-based damage assessment that if, if this, this is a projection that, uh, and if something goes wrong or some event take place, what can be, uh, the damage? The point number four I would like to bring here that when I referred that the assessments are primarily the government driven, uh, and primarily for submitting of the memorandum. Memorandum, uh, basically that is a kind of a, uh, call for support, call for support from the federal government, uh, in terms of money, in terms of other resources. So, uh, uh, though there has, uh, the, uh, notion of the scope for multi-stakeholder engagement in assessments also, that is another gap area. So multi-stakeholder gap assessment is there. For example, the engagement of corporate systems, whereas, uh, despite of being a significant recognition that corporate systems, industry also and private sector also, uh, gets affected a lot in disasters. Besides this, the civil society, civil society agencies sometimes get together and they conduct their own assessments. So, uh, there, there are several, uh, assessments, but all in silos. And then, uh, uh, at the, at the result, there are different figures coming out press and then there are, there are, uh, issues. Uh, then, uh, the, 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 the loss and damage, there is a scoping that loss and damage methodology can be used for various stages of disaster management cycle. I think that is also an innovation we have been discussing about, but we have to, uh, come forward to implement it. One is that ex ante that I referred to. Second is the PDNA that the tool now we have. With the third aspect that is of recovery, post-disaster recovery period. I think now we are, when we are talking about the long-term recovery as one of the very important aspects. The new aspect has come that how do we climate proof the, the post-disaster recovery or the green recovery kind of thing? And, and, uh, beside this, uh, currently we are trying to, uh, come up with a new integration to the environmental impact assessment of major developmental projects that we call it DIA, disaster impact assessment as an integration to EIA process and then looking at from a life cycle assessment perspectives. For example, if we look at, uh, in India, the, the solar systems are being promoted like anything uh, for, for, uh, alternative energy sources and that is the need of the time. But these solar PV cells utilize, have, uh, the heavy materials, heavy, heavy metals and which are, which are kind of a, the hazardous, uh, that can generate hazardous waste as a consequence of, uh, disaster events, for example cyclone, have been, uh, the windstorm, these kind of things. So, so looking at the life cycle assessment approach and then integrating the damage assessment, disaster related damages is another scope that we see and we have recently come up with a paper also, may I try to make an assessment. Uh, another thing, slow onset disasters. Slow onset disasters, uh, many times the impact takes place outside the boundary of the actually, actual where the disaster taking place. For example drought, a lot of people migrate to other places. Sometimes they migrate even with, along with their kettles. So actual disaster occurring someplace, the impact is being realized some other place. So how to do that? I think requires a lot of, uh, inter-jurisdictional cooperation and coordination among various states, among various districts of administration. So the, uh, that is another, uh, the important aspect. And second thing that though in the PDNA sector, we have listed twenty-five sectoral dimensions. But development has many more sectors and then when it comes to sectors, there are certain elements which are counted many times, so multiple times. For example, when it comes to agriculture sector, forestry sector is treated separately. Then fisheries sector is treated separately. There are certain parameters, then those get multi- uh, counted many times. So this is also a methodological dimension that is, that is an important aspect to refer here. That, uh, needs, uh, needs some kind of a, uh, remedy, I would say. Then, uh, uh, India being a diverse country, almost all kind of disasters we have. We have mountain areas, we have coastal areas, we have desert areas, dry land areas, the flood plains, we have heat affected areas. We have industrial, highly industrialized states also prone to chemical, another kind of accidents. Uh, but the data collection system has been heterogeneous. Uh, so the challenge with the baseline data is, I would say that that is a cross-cutting across all the points. This, this is very important. Until unless we have a very effective baseline data already available. Uh, then, then only we can immediately come up with a comparison that what was already existing there and what scale it was existing and what got lost as a as a consequence of disaster. And then also looking at the spill over effect. For example, there are incidences that there are consecutive droughts. One year there was a drought, it has impact, there were another drought, then there was another drought. How do we think that the impact that we are considering is an impact of this year drought or it, it continued the past year itself? Similarly, in case of floods also, maybe in some same season, there are three episodes of floods in one area. How to consider that which particular disaster has how much impact? So that is also an important thing, but when it comes to economics, that is an important thing. Uh, they, they coming towards the last, uh, point, uh, that, uh, in order to promote the, the effective loss and damage, uh, assessment approaches in India, there, there, it also requires, uh, huge efforts toward capacity building at local level. Because all the time central teams cannot come, all the teams, uh, all the time, the external agencies cannot be brought, uh, to, to undertake assessments. And, uh, because as, as a, as, as a result of this, only major disasters are captured. The smaller disasters, slow onset disasters and the precursors of disasters which are kind of hazardous events are not captured for assessments, which is, which is, uh, which is an anomaly, my, more particularly when we consider the climate change related or climate extreme related loss and, uh, damage issues. And then many times it leads to a lot of assumptions also. When, when we have undulating, uh, data, uh, and data gaps are there. Then the last point which, which I would touch, recently we have carried out a study of two major cyclones, Cyclone Amphan and Cyclone Tauti, uh, that affected four states of India. Uh, and one of these was a super cyclone. And, uh, so we did two, uh, very systemic study. One is that going beyond, uh, the PDNA that, uh, what are the underlying factors, uh, underlying positive factors for the loss and damage? So basically what went wrong? If the, if the prediction and forecasting was given and an early warning was issued, whether the person did not perceive adequately or perceive correctly or did not responded, uh, respond properly to that, uh, warning or the evacuation, uh, the notice or whatever. So what went wrong at the ground level and that resulted into the damage and loss? So, uh, that was, a report is already out. It is available on, uh, our website also and my, my research gate also. And the, the, uh, another study is a small but very, very useful study that was reflected in the previous, uh, uh, background discussions also. Uh, we, we, uh, we tried to come up with, uh, uh, with a background study of the, uh, good practices across the world and then bringing in the context of India, uh, is some kind of a approach of death audits. So basically assessing each and every, every disaster deaths, uh, and making an assessment. So, uh, and for that, what can be the institutional mechanism at state level and at the district level? So that report is also out, that is also available on our website. This is just past two months only. Uh, those reports are published. So these are a couple of, uh, points that I wanted to share. And recently we have published a paper in, uh, I J D R R, uh, International Journal for the Disaster Risk Production on this aspect only, the methodological challenges and procedural, uh, gaps that need to be addressed for improving, uh, loss and damage assessment in India. So thank you very much and over to you, uh, for taking this agenda forward. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, uh, Professor Anil Gupta. Yes, thank you very much. Yeah. I think, uh, yeah, some of you may have questions, but because of the time constraint, we want to take question after each presentation. Instead, after all presentations are over, we have time for question and answer. So in the meanwhile, you can send your question using chat box. So we will take the questions and at Q and A session. Thank you for your understanding. So let me introduce, uh, next speaker. So next speaker is Right Honourable Sean Edward, uh, from Government of Saint Lucia. So, uh, so Right Honourable, uh, Sean Edward is a senior member of the Government of Saint Lucia who currently serves as the Minister of Education, Sustainable Development, Innovation, Science, Technology and Vocational Training. He is also the second fifty, a politician, a political leader of the Saint Lucia Labour Party. Mr. Edward is passionate about poverty alleviation, youth empowerment, gender equity, disaster risk mitigation and disaster response focusing on relief and recovery. Mr. Edward holds MSC in Risk Crisis and Disaster Management from the University of Rest, uh, UK. So, uh, uh, Right Honourable Sean Edwards, uh, well, it's yours. Thank you.
Thank you very much for this very decorated, um, introduction. Um, let me start off by saying good morning from Barbados. I am from Saint Lucia, but I'm currently in Barbados, um, in my capacity as chairman of the Caribbean Disaster Emergency Management Agency. And in the next few minutes, I will be joining the likes of Prime Minister Mia Mortley of Barbados um, as we kick off the twelfth Caribbean Conference on Comprehensive Disaster Management. So my time on this particular forum will be truncated. I only have a few minutes, um, with you. And so I've decided not to go into an extensive presentation, but instead add my voice to a discussion. It is very timely and very necessary, especially for people who come from some of the countries and the regions um, that some of you happen to be living in. So once again, good morning to everybody or good afternoon, wherever you may be in, in, in the world. Um, I'm delighted to be part of today's event, both as a government official and as an advocate for people who find themselves at the receiving end of the horrors of climate change in particular and the catastrophic, um, impact that it unleashes on them, um, almost on a monthly basis, if not more frequently. And oftentimes those most affected have no voice. And it is against this backdrop that I will spend no effort to be part of the discussions organized by the Avoidable Deaths Network. Um, I must before proceeding any further commend Nivedita, um, and her team for having the foresight to bring this grouping of minds, um, to work and to strengthen the, the collaboration amongst, uh, like-minded individuals. And for me, it's not about being able to give expression to what we know, but the backdrop against, against which we do. And so I must register my appreciation and thanks to the, in, um, ADN team for the sacrifices that you make and the effort you continue to put in for the cause. I know it is not motivated by money or by fame, but instead it is a demonstration of your character and the concern that you have for mankind, particularly those who are vulnerable and as I said, have no avenue for recourse when they have had to deal with the consequences of actions of individuals, um, for which they're not responsible. Today's special session on neglected areas of disaster loss and damage is quite topical and it is very, very timely. Um, one of the outcomes of COP twenty-seven is establishing a new loss and damage fund that will help developing countries treat with the issues or the impacts of climate change. And Professor before me, um, mentioned it at COP. I was at COP, I represented Saint Lucia and of course the wider CARICOM or Caribbean grouping. Um, I had an opportunity to address the high level segment, um, where I did not mince my words, speaking to developed countries, asking them to own up and, 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 and show more. and, 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 and show moral fortitude by making monies available for develop, for developing countries to treat with the issues of, of climate change. One of the issues that has confronted developing countries for some time now, although the IPCC report speaks to to, um, what we should anticipate by way of climate change, um, and how that can impact small island developing states. All the, the scientific studies point in the direction of developed countries for, for the manner in which and the quantum of, of greenhouse gases they emit and how that contributes to climate change and the debilitating impact that climate change is having on small economies like those of the Caribbean and all the seeds, all of that is documented. Yet, when developed countries have to make resources available, that would cause developing countries to resort to proper adaptation and mitigation programs. It is always a painstaking exercise and you cannot always wait for developing countries, but instead what develop can, what developing can, can't always wait for developing countries to make the resources available. So it, it leaves the developing countries with no other alternative but to go out there, borrow and saddle themselves with debt that is just not sustainable. And given the impact of COVID on small economies like those of the Caribbean and the, the Pacific and smaller and more vulnerable nations. We are still reeling from the impact of COVID nineteen. And so for every dollar, those governments get by way of revenue. Eighty, sometimes ninety percent of that money, that revenue has to be channeled in the direction of debt servicing and it leaves you with, with, uh, uh, an insufficient amount to place medication at your hospitals, to deal with your own infrastructure, to modernize your education system, to ensure that the children of tomorrow will be on par with their counterparts or other parts of the world. So as a policymaker, whenever I am given an opportunity to speak at a forum like this, I always try to take the discussion and to link it to the everyday situation of the man on the street. The farmer in the village, the fisherman who's on the seaside waiting to go out in his, um, small boat for a catch that will enable him to feed his family. But to come back to the loss and damage fund at COP, I think it was a significant step for developing countries, but we are not yet out of the woods. And I am on the record and I, 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 I will say without reservation that in spite of the fact that there has been an agreement at COP to establish a loss and damage fund. Um, that developing countries will be able or seeds will be able to tap into. We have to be very careful, we have to pay attention, we have to mind our business to ensure that the guidelines that would inform how that particular fund will be used does not become or it is not as bureaucratic as what already exists with entities such as the GCF, the Green Climate Fund. It's one thing to, and I don't want to come across as a pessimist, but history is replete with examples where we go to international meetings, we are part of international forum, decisions are made and when the time comes to give expression to those decisions, um, the processes are able to be manipulated that do, and, and, and those do not result in, in our people benefiting in the ways that they were supposed to have benefited. Saint Lucia, where I'm from is a small island developing state. Um, just last month, exactly one month ago, one month and a day, um, we experienced a weather system, a trough with, which remained stationary on the northern foot of our island and dropping approximately six inches of rain in next to no time. This resulted in landslides, landslippages, homes were destroyed and in quick time, the damage assessment was revealing um, that we were in the red in the region of about ten to fifteen million dollars. Have we been able to mobilize resources beyond our boundaries, beyond our shores, um, to recover? No, and again, um, it's not because we've not asked, we've basically knocked on every door where we believe we can get grant funding. Um, but the process, not only is the process cumbersome, but sometimes you just get the impression that there isn't a willingness on the part of some of those agencies and it is not me or the prime minister or those of us who are able to fend ourselves or if, who are affected. But as I said, the average man in the community, the farmer, the fisher, the craft vendor, these are the persons who are impacted. And it is for, for reasons like this and against this backdrop, that I have such admiration for personnel in the avoidable deaths network. I know it deals specifically by way of its mandate on minimizing and avoiding unnecessary deaths in particular in times of disaster, but those themes are so intricately linked to each other that it is very difficult to speak about one and not incorporate the, the, the other. Um, damage assessment continues to happen, um, for us in Saint Lucia. And I'm sure by the end of that process, um, the figure which I mentioned a while ago would probably rise um, significantly when everything across sectors, um, is taken into consideration. We look at the war in Ukraine, um, and I know it is not our position to take sides in terms of whose rights and whose wrong. But the one thing that is unavoidable and that cannot be denied or refuted is the fact that it has contributed to a rise in the cost of fuel and for small island states like Saint Lucia and the Caribbean that do not have oil or do not produce petroleum, um, when those events happen in faraway countries. Um, the ripple effect is felt in the little village that I live in the little, um, two by four, four shack that, that, that my neighbor calls home and, and I think these are the issues we have to give expression to, um, to ensure that when we speak in our narrative the plight and the realities of everyday and ordinary people, um, are captured in a way that we can postulate um, workable solutions, um, to improve on those individuals lot in life. We have a little problem in the Caribbean, one of Sagasam, which is seaweed being washed on our shores. The Caribbean is heavily reliant on tourism as the mainstay of its economy. Whether you look at us as a grouping of islands or you were to look at the islands individually, tourism is the mainstay. It is the economic lifeblood of every single island in the Caribbean. And with the influx of Sagasam, uh, which the scientists are saying, um, is as a result of increased global, um, um, ocean temperatures, um, we have a situation where our beaches are littered and they are not as inviting as they used to be and this too will take some effort. Children and young people in Saint Lucia who are affected by floods and disasters frequently miss school, um, because of relocation. I can give you a classic example, we have our lead primary school in terms of, um, enrollment, the Dean Pullet primary, which was named in honor of our first governor, female governor general, Dean Pullet Luizy, um, was impacted by the storm I just mentioned. And in the classroom at ground level, the watermark was measuring four feet of floodwater, so textbooks. Even the report books, the, the, the smart devices that would have procured because we have an appreciation for ICT incorporation in education delivery, all of those were compromised. And so we have to go out there, globe trotting, um, trying to see which friendly governments will be able to come to our assistance, of course complimented by the work of some international agencies. It's less than a week since I returned from Taiwan with the prime minister and there we had to make a pitch to see what, um, level of support we can get from the Taiwanese government to help in the recovery efforts. So it is a real challenge, um, for small island developing states like, like Saint Lucia, the Caribbean, the Pacifics and, and the Pacifics or and all the seeds, but we cannot hoist that white flag of submission. Um, we have to continue to agitate, we will call out the injustices when we see them. But we also understand as a people, a proud people, that we have to go out there and get for ourselves. But the moments when we agitate and we amplify our voices, we do not do so because we believe we are militant. We are only saying that for too long we continue to suffer the consequences of actions of people who do not reside in our geographic sphere, yet we are made to pay for their actions. And if we call upon them to take responsibility by way of making resources that they have at their disposal available to us. I do not believe that we are being unfair. So once again, I want to commend the team, I want to encourage you to continue to be a voice for those persons who are unsuspecting and just don't have the capacity or the avenue to agitate on behalf of themselves, not only in terms of being able to recover from disaster or being able to treat with loss and damage. But I think there's a critical education component to the mandate, um, the way sensitization is key. And I remember reading, um, some of the literature on, on preventing deaths by, by, by snake bites. Um, the situation in Saint, we have poisonous snakes in Saint Lucia, but we, we don't have them in the volumes that, that exist elsewhere. But too many people lost their lives because of ignorance, lack of information and not information that is complicated or complex. The information is just not available and we do not have the structures and the mechanisms in place to make that information available to them. We will not as the avoidable deaths network achieve and accomplish all that is there to be accomplished um, in, in, in record time, but every individual, every community, every country we impact incrementally. Um, I believe we are doing a world of good for those persons who are most vulnerable. And I want to once again commend the team and as I said, I cannot be with you for much longer because the twelfth um, Caribbean Conference on Comprehensive Disaster Management, um, starts in a few minutes and I'm expected in my capacity as chair of the Caribbean Disaster Emergency Management Agency, um, shared a podium with the distinguished Prime Minister of Barbados, the Honourable Mia Mortley, who has become a champion of Caribbean and small island developing states, um, at almost every forum across the globe. Um, basically identifying with some of the wood that we do here as the avoidable deaths network. So with these few words, I want to wish you a very productive day or night wherever in the world you happen to be. And I will continue to support and be an advocate on behalf of this group and ultimately the people who, as I said, oftentimes do not have a voice of their own to give expression to their plight, thank you very much.
So thank you very much, the right honourable Sean Edward for your very, uh, presentation. I'm doing disaster education, so yeah, it will be quite, yeah, interesting and insightful presentation. Thank you very much, uh, right, so yes, now, so let us invite the speakers. So from now on, Nebedita is jelling the session, so over to you Nebedita.
Yes, thank you, thank you Sean, uh, for your most kind and most warm and most encouraging words. Okay, so our next speaker is Ms. Aliza Ayas. Unfortunately, she is not able to give us her talk, which we, which we knew about that. She is on the train at the moment, she has sent us her recording and it will be available on our website, on our YouTube, so we will, uh, upload it shortly. But I will introduce her nonetheless, she is, uh, her name is Aliza Ayas. She is the world's youngest United Nations Goodwill Ambassador and an international climate activist. Aliza founded the Climate Action Society. It's a global nonprofit led by students for climate education and climate policy. Aliza participates in the United Nations Youth Advisory Group on Climate Change and is fighting to correct the huge accessibility gap in climate change resources. At the UK House of Lords, Aliza helps the UK Parliament redirect attention to most up to date climate data and promising adaptation and mitigation solutions on the climate crisis. Now currently she practices as a health and business consultant and she continues to bring attention to pressing environmental issues and implement sustainability measures at fashion brands and corporates. So on behalf of the Avoidable Deaths Network, we would like to encourage and provide all the support that Aliza is doing. She is a real force for change and an agent for sustainable development, so all the best. Aliza, with your commanding and amazing world changing work. So as I said, uh, her, um, recording will be available on our YouTube shortly. So let me invite our next speaker, it's an absolute honor and a pleasure to invite Dr. Gulam Rasul and I call him lovingly Gulam Rasul Pai. So Professor Rasul is currently a professor in the Department of Economics at the International University of Business, Agriculture and Technology in Dhaka. Rasul Pai has over thirty years of experience in research, development and teaching in Bangladesh and beyond. Uh, before moving to Dhaka, recently he was chief economist at International Centre for Integrated Mountain Development, also known as Isimod in Kathmandu in Nepal. He has worked for more than fifty years in the Bangladesh Civil Service in different ministries. He has been actively involved in research and economic and environmental issues and contributed over two hundred peer refereed papers. His research findings incorporated, has been incorporated in many national and global policy papers. And he served as a coordinating lead author for the IPCC report, which is the sixth report. And he appeared as one of the top two percent most cited researchers in the global top scientists list. And one of the most popular developmental researchers in Bangladesh, it's an absolute honor. Rasul Pai, the floor is yours, please give us your talk, thank you. Rasul Pai, please unmute, unmute yourself, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Professor Nebedita for, uh, the kind words. Uh, it is a, uh, great to work with the, uh, avoidable dead networks. This is thanks for organizing this important, uh, event in important occasion, this is almost neglected. And we are, uh, working for neglected people, uh, whose voice are not heard properly. So this, uh, first of all, I would like to welcome, uh, all to my presentation and a greeting from, uh, my university, International University for Business, Agriculture, Technology, Dhaka, Bangladesh. This is now late evening, almost, it's, I think, about six thirty. Uh, I hope that some of you are in the, in the morning, some of you are in the, uh, in the afternoon. So good morning, good afternoon, good evening to all of you. So first of all, uh, today I'll be talking about particularly the loss and damage issue uh, uh, in Bangladesh in general, particularly coastal area of Bangladesh. As you know, all of you know that Bangladesh has a quite large, uh, coastal area and that area is, uh, highly vulnerable to climate change and, and, uh, that one of the major, uh, uh, vulnerable group, uh, in Bangladesh as well as in the world. You all know that, uh, Bangladesh is a very disaster prone, one of the most densely populated, uh, country in the world and majority of the population still live in agriculture, fisheries, livestock, which is highly climate sensitive. Because of that, Bangladesh is one of the very, uh, uh, disaster prone and climate sensitive countries, uh, in the world. And every year in Bangladesh, thousands of people, uh, uh, are losing their crops, their cattle, their land, their homestead, their livelihood asset due to the climate induced disaster, uh, riverbank erosion, cyclone and other, other climatic, uh, and natural disaster. And that is causing lot of, uh, huge, uh, the, the, the impact as well as the, uh, causing damage of property, loss of property and asset. As you can see from my right hand side, that climate related disaster have affected, uh, the, uh, the effect is growing in front, if you look at the from nineteen sixty and now the climate related disaster have, uh, increasing and have affected almost, uh, approximately eight hundred fifty thousand households. Big number, as damage about two hundred fifty thousand hectares of valuable land in Bangladesh, Bangladesh is a very a landscapeous country, this is a huge issue. And all this has causing lot of, uh, huge, uh, economic pressure on Bangladesh, it's causing, uh, economic damage and loss. As per IPCC sixth assessment, latest assessment, Bangladesh suffers huge economic and non-economic losses due to uh, climate induced disaster. One of the major, uh, uh, threat is coming due to climate change. Uh, climate-induced disaster. One of the major uh uh threat is coming due to climate change, as you all know that that is the sea level rise. And because of sea level rise and inundation, it is predicted that by twenty eighty. As uh as sixty-two centimeter of sea level rise would affect forty-three million people of Bangladesh. And it can inundate approximately sixteen percent of Bangladesh. So if forty-three million people are affected. That will be huge implication for not only Bangladesh, that uh that effect must spread even the region and even the other part of the country. And because of uh the natural disaster, displacement is uh increasing every year and and it is now uh estimated that. That over thirteen thirteen million people may compelled to migrate by twenty fifty. Due to intensified climate impact and natural disaster. If we look at that, uh, but uh if we uh look at that, this uh impact, this impact even. Uh, most uh uh most threatening and most affected in the our uh coastal areas of Bangladesh. Uh, more severe in coastal areas of Bangladesh, as Bangladesh, I already tell that has a. Over seven hundred kilometer long coastline and there is a vast network of river system draining vast flow of the Ganga. Brokutro and Magna River System. If you look at that Bangladesh is a is is in between the Himalayan. Mountain as well as the Bay of Bengal. In between these, because of this geographical location. Uh, and and Bangladesh has to uh has to suffer both from the melting Himalayan glacier. On the one hand, on the other hand, sea level rise, uh, uh, in the sea level rise, all that. So. But we are facing the double challenges of the climate change. And coastal zone accounts for about one-third of the total area of Bangladesh. And uh twenty-eight percent of the population live in coastal areas and depend privately on. Agri- uh climate-sensitive sector like this mostly in the agriculture, fisheries, the major uh and livestock. So that is a major issue. And if we look at that, uh, in the last uh hundred or two hundred years. Uh, more than seventy major cyclone hits our coastal belt of Bangladesh. You may all, some of you may remember the tropical cyclone that hit Bangladesh in November nineteen seventy. For uh caused over three hundred thousand deaths. That was a very penalty. Pathetic. And almost nine hundred thousand people died during the catastrophe cyclone in last thirty-five years. For you, you channel facing our coastal areas of Bangladesh. So these are the uh the basically the uh the. Uh, direct damage, all that, but there is many onslaught uh on uh slow onset. Impact also coming from the coastal area of Bangladesh. One of the important is the saltwater intrusion. Uh, this this is becoming a serious issue in Bangladesh, maybe other uh other part of the coastal area of the world. That because of uh sea level rise, one on the one hand, on the other hand, Bangladesh now. Uh, the the flow of river from the upstream, particularly originated from the Himalaya. The flow of river originally from the Himalaya are 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 declining and dwindling. Because of that, now saltwater intrusion has become a serious issue in the coastal area of Bangladesh. And that has caused multiple effect and cascading many, many effect. And according to the IPC report, uh, the very, very alarming alarming uh apprehension that. In Bangladesh, particularly our southwest coastal zone of Bangladesh, like um the Kulna, Borishal, Portohali, this area. In the IPCC report anticipated that uh the our freshwater river, particularly freshwater river area may. Shrink from forty-one percent to seventy percent between two thousand twelve and two thousand fifty. That that uh will cover huge catastrophe for whole country of the Bangladesh if it is happened. This is uh the whole changes. This is because of saltwater intrusion and the declining. Uh, river flow from the Austin River have affecting the entered the ecosystem of the coastal area that affected the coastal ecosystem. Which is not only disrupted the agricultural livelihood of the people living there, but also contaminated drinking water resources. Increase the health risks, uh, uh, increase disease burden as well as include insecurity, malnutrition in coastal area. What um uh my colleague Nibita called as a cascading effect. So if we see that that the climate disaster are not remaining on the physical side, it is cascading effect on people life. Their health, their nutrition, their livelihood and ultimately entire life of this. One of the major issues, uh, I think we need to highlight here that when we talk loss and debate, uh, normally we focus on the uh. Normally focus on the economic losses and damage uh damage of the uh natural disaster. But if we look at that, one of the major uh uh concern coming that non-economic losses. Because non-economic losses are indirect. And it is, I cannot be easily see that it is not easily measurable because of that we mostly. Uh, ignore uh all the non- non-economic losses of the uh climate change. One of the uh issue is coming our coastal area, then waterborne diseases. Because of the frequent coastal flooding that has increased the salinity intrusion in groundwater, not only the surface water. And that contaminated drinking water in our southwest uh Bangladesh. And that affecting millions, millions of people, particularly poor and women. Because earlier they used to use the the uh groundwater for drinking through the our tubal, hand-tubal. But now all hand-tubal became and uh water become un- uh unusable. And when I heard that, even uh the women has to now. Spend hours and hours to collect uh drinking water from far away from the some pond, some stream. Uh, that that is affecting the huge, huge their lives on that. Drinking water contaminated also have increased waterborne diseases in our southeast Bangladesh. You see that. As per IPCC assessment, Bangladesh would face growing disease burden in climate hotspot resulting in. Two point two million more E. coli bacteria by two hundred uh 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 twenty-one hundred years, by next uh hundred years. So E. coli bacteria is increasing and it will face more than. Another indirect effect that is affecting our the society very badly, that is the malnutrition. Because of the saline intrusion in our coastal area. That affected the crop production, particularly that is the area or rice-growing area, that because of uh uh salt into the rice production have. Gone uh gone down, as well as the production of fruits and vegetable has also gone very down. And and that has also reduced the crop varieties, increases also the uh diversity of food. People are just taking just uh the uh few foods from diversity and dietary diversity has going down. That has increased the malnutrition in Bangladesh, particularly women and children. That has become a serious issue. Uh, our north Bangladesh. And that not only melded, also causing people migration, post-migration. And migration is the particularly um the coastal people are who are. Uh, suffering from the cyclone and flood. They are moving gradually from the coastal area to nearby urban areas. Even big cities and become from earlier, they were a uh from a farm, now become a slum dweller. Their entirely whole livelihood and life has been changed. They are living near the roadside, near the in the slum where they don't have. Enough health facilities, even water, hygiene, sanitary facilities, they are kissing light, all that. And another important thing that uh what is the uh I consider very serious. For example, if you look at that, remember in two thousand seven, Bangladesh affected by the uh C. dog. And C. dog destroyed uh many crops, damaged road infrastructure. But what is not reported properly is then how it affected children's education. Cyclone destroyed about hundred uh primary school and another eight thousand schoolyard damage seriously. And of course, that has estimated cost of reconstruction uh US dollar eighty-two million. But most severe cost was that, that affected the education learning of about hundred thousand children for quite a some time. And that damage, this is indirect or non-sevable, that is a huge, huge cost for the uh the society in the for the future. I'm coming to my last, I'm not going to give uh much uh suggestion or recommendation. Uh, we are pleased that at this, the COP twenty-seven just over uh in the last month. And uh we see that at the 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 policymaker has reached some agreement on less loss and damage fund. For vulnerable countries. This is a, this is a great success. We are happy that at least some agreement has made. And but uh 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 this agreement, this is a one step forward, but as our honorable minister uh just mentioned a few minutes before. That this is not enough. We need a operational mechanism to operational that fund, how this fund can. Can uh move to the go to the uh uh developing countries, vulnerable countries. If we cannot establish mechanism. Operational mechanism, probably uh the poor and developing countries will not be able to access this fund, this. So one of the important. And in this uh framework, I think one of the important aspect we should still uh emphasize the point that while. Economic impact is important, we also need to look at the non-economic laws and damage facing by the poor people, vulnerable communities, their life, malnutrition, the health. Diseases, all burden probably need to think about that. We need to develop and enhance our knowledge, understanding about the comprehensive needs management approaches. To address loss and damage. Uh, and we need to, uh, our Professor Anil Gupta rightly mentioned, like India, similarly in Bangladesh. When we say that we we make some assessment government by the loss and damage, it is only post-disaster assessment. When disaster take place, we made assessment by government with other agency to give basically humanitarian support. But that does not, that is not enough and that is not resilient. So we need to develop proactive accent, absentee planning. And assessment and mechanism so that we can take action earlier so that poor people uh who are not victim of this. Cyclone who can that. I think that is the one of the important aspect and need capacity building for that. And Bangladesh and other developing countries require significant support. Uh, to uh to avoid, to minimize, address loss and damage, particularly. If we want to make a absentee assessment, that needs lot of technical support and capacity building, we need to do that. And we need to also strengthen our dialogue, coordination and coherence among the all the stakeholders. From the global stakeholder, national stakeholder, regional stakeholder and uh and the local stakeholder. Even I can, if I see Bangladesh event, we see our disaster ministry, uh, ministry, they are meeting in this, but. Number of ministry and divisional organization are part of that activities. We often see that the lack of coordination, that is not of a lot of syna- lack of synergies in their work. That affect ultimately the uh the poor people. We need to strengthen dialogue and coordination of that. We need to scale up support uh to minimize loss and death and build capacity, both national and uh local stakeholders and. We need to provide technical assistance uh to national and 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 local stakeholders to assess loss and damage, need assessment. I think we need a. We need to accept a need assessment and M M establishing comprehensive framework for. Uh, operationalizing uh the loss of damage framework for both at national level uh as well as a local level. With this, I would like to thank you all for your kind attention. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Rasool Pai. This is absolutely insightful. Uh, we would very much like to collaborate with you to develop this conceptual framework for operation, both at central and local level. And that's one thing. And the second thing, before we move to the next speaker, I just want to. Add couple of points to Rasool Pai's points. Number one is that. When, you know, regarding this salinity and getting not getting access to fresh water in Bangladesh. Now, I have been working in Bangladesh since two thousand seven. So between two thousand seven and two thousand nine, I was a postdoc fellow and I was traveling up and down Bangladesh. Um, and you know, what was fascinating were two things. Number one is that this collection of water. Can also lead to secondary deaths, that is drowning deaths, when women go to collect water in deep water. And drowning is another area that Adrian has been focusing. And the second thing is about this displacement and. And this river erosion, Rasool Pai, I was shocked during two thousand seven and two thousand nine, I traveled up north. Down south and the Midlands of Bangladesh. And I have met people who have been displaced. Their houses, homesteads, been eaten and swallowed by the river. And those people, I'd met them down south, but they have migrated up north. Some of them I have met in the Midlands with relatives there and they call themselves Nodibhangar Look. There's a people who are being made by the broken river. It was absolutely amazing. And I had the opportunity to interview quite a few displaced households. And I asked one question to one household's member, what is your dream? And this woman told me, my dream is to sleep in a house in a cot that doesn't move. So can you imagine? I I have written a story which is called Pansikor. Uh, it's a part of a book of social science objects. This Pansikor means it's a dinghy boat. And then in that dinghy boat, the household has been leaving. And and this woman has given birth to three children in that little boat. And imagine, you know, the basic needs, even the basic needs, accessing those basic needs is a challenge for them. So I really commend Rasool Pai for bringing, you know, bringing those um humanitarian. For personal stories of the people that are experienced on a day-to-day life, which we often don't hear. And I think it brings back home what does loss and damage actually means. Not just in Bangladesh, but also in many other parts of the world. But I have had the privilege to work in Bangladesh and I have seen them firsthand. And it is really shocking and moving and touching. So with that note, Rasool Pai, thank you so much for giving us a very inspiring. Very forththought and very, uh, you know, um, futuristic. And plans for loss and damage, but also I need to thank Rasool Pai for another reason. Because it was Rasool Pai and I last year came up with this idea of this special session, loss and damage. We wrote a note, but we didn't know that it will become so topical and timely. And then the COP twenty-seven happened last month. We came together again very quickly. We wrote the concept note. So once again, thanks to Rasool Pai for, you know, embracing me and and working together. So I'm learning by working with Professor Rasool. Thank you very much. So let us bring the next speaker. Thank you, Rasool Pai.
Thank you, Professor Nibita. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rasool Pai. Our penultimate speaker is Samuel Akera. And once again. A huge privilege, absolute honor to introduce Samuel Akera. Samuel is the Senior Resilience Advisor at UNDP in Ethiopia. He is a program specialist with over fifteen years of professional experience in disaster resorption. Climate change and development nexus. Samuel Akera holds the MSC in Risk, Crisis and Disaster Management from the University of Leicester. But he also has other master's degrees such as Development Studies and Project Management Professional Certificate. Samuel was our Commonwealth-funded scholar and the winner of the most prestigious UK's Adult Learners Award in twenty fourteen. So Samuel, I'm so proud of you. Thank you very much for joining this session. Please deliver your talk. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much, Dr. Nibita, for that very uh humbling introduction. Uh, I I think I have been listening very carefully to the previous speakers. And they've made my work uh a little bit easy. Um, the focus of the presentation from Dr. Anil Gupta from India, he did mention about the PDNA. Uh, and also the last speaker, Dr. Goulam Rasool from Bangladesh, also talked about. Uh, some of the issues that I am going to present. So uh somehow my presentation will build on. Uh, the the foundation already laid by the previous speakers. Now, um, my my topic really focused on addressing neglected areas of uh disaster loss and damage in recovery planning. Um, just before I go um further with the presentation, I need to make some very. Uh, important statements here, uh, which also came out of the previous presentation by Goulam Rasool. Uh, he did mention about one one key recommendation that post-disaster recovery. Um, that the the damage and loss needs to integrate the non-economic uh, non-economic losses. Uh, which for me, that is an inherent weakness of the concept of damage and loss. Secondly, uh the concept and the discourse of damage and loss is actually not a new concept. Uh from the UN side, uh we have been talking about it right from nineteen seventy-two. Actually, the UN Economic Commission for Latin America has been using the concept of damage and loss for a long time, until the World Bank came in and modified it uh through what they call the Damage and Loss Assessment. And in two thousand and eight, this concept again was modified, you know, because the focus on damage and loss was not bringing the human element uh into the whole picture. It focuses on infrastructure, it focuses on economy, but the human element was basically out of the picture. And when you look at the issues raised by uh by Gollam uh in his in his presentation, he mentioned elements that are missed out. He talked about the issues of nutrition. He talks about issues of health. He talked about uh issues of education. Those are the human elements that the damage and loss do not actually account for. And therefore, what I'm going to share with you is from a programming perspective, what the UN has been doing over the last fourteen years to ensure that the human element is actually at the center of damage and loss assessment. So next. Next. Yeah, so the origin of the Post Disaster Needs Assessment, as I mentioned before, this uh emanated from nineteen seventy-two methodology, the DALLA methodology from the UN ECLAC. But in two thousand and eight, the UN, the EU and the World Bank came out to collectively um to frame this Post Disaster Needs Assessment uh to support recovery, uh planning and strategy formulation. And there are three sets of important documents, Post Disaster Needs Assessment, uh Guidance Volume A and Volume B that you can access. Um also the Disaster Recovery Framework that focuses, the first two focuses basically on natural uh uh natural disasters. And then the third volume is what they call the RAPBA. It focuses on post-conflict assessment. That is the human uh element. And there the two are interrelated. Next. Uh so the Post Disaster Needs Assessment actually uh is a work that the UN has been uh the UN, World Bank and EU through their partnership have deployed throughout globally in the world. And to date, over ninety countries have applied this methodology uh in post-disaster context and recently also in the post-COVID context to assess what they call the COVID Needs and Recovery Assessment uh in many countries. So what you see, the orange um the the countries with orange are countries where the UN, EU, World Bank have actually carried out uh both uh post- COVID needs assessment using this methodology. Next. So there are key, four key benefits of applying the PDNA methodology. Uh first is that it provides a clear structure and protocol to assess the socio-economic impacts. The key word there is socio-economic impact. And this leads, this links very closely to uh the neglected areas. And the second point is that uh it provides a high-quality single collective assessment uh where multiple agencies that ordinarily would have done their own assessment come together to work together with the government to undertake a joint assessment and produce a single report. Thirdly is the aspect of ensuring that no one is left behind. Again, linking to the subject that we are talking about and the flexibility of application in different contexts. Next. So the methodology actually um has about five key steps. Uh the first step is basically trying to understand the context. Um I think um uh Dr. Gupta mentioned about baseline situation, which is very important, very critical. So this first step is trying to understand the context, getting the baseline information correct. And moving to the second step is to identify the effects of the disaster. And the third step is identifying the socio-economic impact. And I have, I am, I have put that in different color because these links, this is where we draw the line uh and draw connections with the neglected areas and how we try to integrate uh the neglected areas in recovery, in post-disaster recovery planning. Then the first step is uh identifying recovery needs and formulating of a recovery strategy. So coming back to step number three, I did mention about integration of the human recovery aspect, human aspect into damage and losses. And step number three is broken into two parts. One is focusing on the economy. The second one is focusing on the human aspect. And this is where the UN, particularly UNDP, has been very critical uh in actually advocating for the change in the methodology to include human impact assessment. There's a specific methodology and tools that is led by the UN and ILO on the Human Impact Assessment called the HIA methodology. Next. So the human impact is the second element. Leave the first element of economic impact. The human impact represents the evolving disruption of the population's normal livelihoods and income, as well as access to basic commodities and social services. Next. So we'll focus a little bit more on the human impact. Uh so the methodology developed by UNDP uh called the Human Impact Assessment Methodology actually deploys about five core indicators um which relates to human, human development. And each of those five indicators have a set of sub-indicators. So what are those five indicators? The first one is the living condition. Second is livelihoods. Third is food security, gender equality, and aspect of social inclusion. So each of those five core indicators have sub-indicators with detailed methodology, how to collect information for each of those indicators. Next. So this are, you know, as the the list of the core indicators, the five, and then the sub-indicators under each of the core indicators. I'm not going to go into the detail of it. And also the, what we call the final analysis, which focuses on assessing uh elements of multi-dimensional poverty, uh issues of income poverty, uh food security outcomes, gender equality and inclusivity, or leaving leaving no one behind. So there's a complete detailed analysis, questions also, and how to do the analysis to come with this final uh final results. Next. So now, that is the theoretical part of it. Now, moving from theory to application, how do you apply this whole concept to help countries undertake recovery planning and develop recovery strategies? So this is the work that we did in uh in Mozambique, uh in the post-I-DI, uh twenty twenty nineteen, post-I-DI uh cyclone and also post uh Kenneth, this guy cyclone Kenneth. So you can see, we have different graphs here, a different uh different, different figures here. The 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 two middle person talks about damage, the values of damage, and the other one is the value of losses. And they are broken down under the damage, uh under damages. We have a total value of one point five billion. That was the damage of Cyclone Idai and Kenneth combined. But you see, on the loss side, we had a total of one point eight billion. So it's almost fifty fifty percent uh in in terms of the figures. But when you come to the lost part, the lost element, you see that is the productive sector that accounted for the greatest losses. Up to seventy-one percent is from the productive sector, particularly agriculture and fisheries, industries and commerce accounting for forty-five percent. And there's also still cross-cutting uh elements, which are actually, in many cases, not uh those are not quantifiable. And and these are areas, they look small, but they're very significant when it comes to neglected areas in terms of post-disaster recovery uh programming. Next. So in terms of the human impact, uh we have, again, in the context of post-cyclone Idai, these are some of the things that uh we uh we we considered or were reported. Some were quantified, but others were un-quantified. But all these bullet points in terms of um farming households affected uh in terms of uh the loss in income, animals dying, leave alone if and the people who have died and they have left, relying uh off on, and you know, um people with disability and all that. So all this cumulatively leads to multi-dimensional poverty. And there is a particular strategy to estimate the multi-dimensional poverty of any disaster that the UN has developed. And the graph below shows you the impact of the post-cyclone Idai on poverty, uh on poverty rates. You can see already the estimate shows that the poverty rate uh is likely to increase to seventy-nine in the affected areas, up from sixty-four. And the kind of the orange, the orange graph is a projection of the impact of the disaster in terms of poverty. Next. Yeah, again, I I did mention about leaving no one behind. And this assessment, the Human Impact Assessment, actually looks at the impact of disaster on women, on children, on older people, people with disability and IDPs, and try to look at the impact individually. But for the purpose of planning, how do we factor, how do we factor these people when we are undertaking recovery or building back better in the society? Because we cannot ignore them. Next. So that is the end of my presentation. Um thank you very much. Over to you, doctor.
Thank you very much, Samuel, for sharing the UNDP's approach. I quite liked it. You know, I think the the heart of it is still human development. Released in nineteen ninety-four, so it's fantastic. So thank you very much. I'm conscious of the fact, I've just been reminded that we are short of time. We have got sixteen minutes, so it's an absolute pleasure to invite our last speaker, Mr. Rahul Sen Gupta. Uh Mr. Sen Gupta has been working with the United Nations for over fifteen years. And currently, he works with the United Nations Office for Disaster Resurrection in Germany as a Program Management Officer. But before that, Mr. Sen Gupta has also worked as a Program Manager Officer at UNDRR's Geneva Office. And also as a Program Analyst within the Bureau of Crisis Prevention and Recovery at UNDP's Geneva Office. So, Mr. Sen Gupta, the floor is yours. But before that, I really want to thank you for accepting our invitation at such a short notice. So we are absolutely thrilled to have you to provide a concluding remark. And I think I have informed our audience in the beginning that I have had the privilege. Thanks to yourself and and Dr. Animesh Kumar for inviting me to attend that historic Global Forum on Disaster Loss and Damage Track and Loss. And it took place on twenty ninth and thirtieth, thirtieth of November. And Mr. Sen Gupta will provide some debrief from that event and also provide some concluding remarks for this to this session. So, Mr. Sen Gupta, the floor is yours. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Professor Nibita. This is, uh this is a great opportunity for us to uh share with you uh some of our uh findings and learnings that we've had in the process of the monitoring of the SENDAI framework, which is what I want to focus on. As you know, the United Nations Office for Disaster Disaster Resurrection is the custodian agency working uh for for monitoring of the SENDAI framework. Just to be clear, when we are saying monitoring, we do not mean monitoring of uh uh monitoring by us of of the implementation, but it is the self-monitoring by the member states, and we are supporting that as as the Secretary. Uh thank you for also mentioning about the um the event that we had in in Bonn last week. Thank you for joining uh that event. Um and this was again in partnership with uh UNDP. Uh so I'm very, very grateful and glad to see uh UNDP's uh presence and and intervention today again, very informative over the PDNA. Uh and also the World Meteorological Organization. As as you know, you can imagine, it's it's not about, only about the um the losses and the impacts that are happening, but it is also an important aspect of tracking the hazards that are causing these uh these uh impacts. So that's what um you know, the la- uh the last week's event was about. Uh today, I I just um focus on a few uh main highlights of that we see as kind of challenges that countries are facing in terms of the monitoring. As you know, and let me share, share my screen. And this is not really very exhaustive, but it's it's just, and I think the presentations earlier uh by Professor Gollam and others have covered a lot of uh very, very uh kind of concrete areas of work. So we can only kind of give you some ideas that we've seen from from a good global perspective. But let me just uh quickly share my screen. I hope you can see my screen now.
Lauren, have you given Mr. Sen Gupta?
Yeah, 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 no, that's uh the, yeah, it's, she has, she has given me, she has given me. So I just want to be sure that you you can see my screen, yeah. So um just for, in case colleagues, any of the colleagues which I which I rarely doubt uh may not, may or may not be fully conversant with with the SENDAI framework, but just to give you an in a snapshot what it talks about and primarily from a monitoring perspective. So the SENDAI framework, as you know, is looks at uh, you know, the the, from period two thousand fifteen to two thousand thirteen. It has one goal, which covers areas of hazards exposure, vulnerability and preparedness, uh building into resilience. There's four priorities of action, understanding risks, strengthening risk governance, investing in this for resilience and enhancing preparedness and recovery. Uh now, from a monitoring point of view, what is important is to look at the targets. And the targets, uh as most of you would know, are to do with four, uh which is, which are basically named, or nominally are being from targets A to D related to uh losses. And 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 it's very topical for today's uh discussion on damage and losses, primarily uh mortality and affected people, uh then on economic losses, which is target C, and target T, again, on damage of infrastructure and disruption of basic services. Thereafter, there are three others, which are more about monitoring of DRR action. So primarily, target E is about the about how countries are developing and implementing national disaster reduction strategies and and local, uh and their local governments kind of developing their local counterparts. Uh then we have target F, looks at international cooperation uh across, across the countries, which means reporting by developed or donor countries and also reporting by the recipient countries, looking at what um funds have been provided and what can funds have been received towards supporting DRR actions. And last but not the least, which is again a very important topic.
Sorry, Mr. Sen Gupta. Sorry, we 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 have to stop you because I think you wanted to share the screen. Your s- screen hasn't been shared.
Oh, oh, oh my God, on my screen.
And we raised hand. And of course, Lauren just told me that you can't really see the hand because you're
Okay, I can't see the hand.
Sorry to interrupt you. So I think you have to share the slides.
I I I did share this kind of on my screen. It shows, you know, the green border, which means it's it's shared, but but again, let me try again.
Let me ask Lauren, please help, Mr. Sen Gupta. Thank you.
Uh I I mean, I have pressed share screen. I do have the green button share screen and I
If you un- unshare the screen and then try again.
Okay, okay. I think it says one participant can share at a time. I I just hope no one else is sharing at this point.
No, no one else is sharing, so.
That's fine. Uh I'll try again.
Perfect. It's loading now. Thank you.
So can you see my screen with the?
Yep, great. Thank you. Yeah, we can.
Okay, great. Success. So I'll run, run very quickly then. So that's, uh so as I was saying, the last one is about target E, is about early warning um systems and disaster risk information with something that is extremely important nowadays uh with with the Secretary General of the United Nations committing on or 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 encouraging uh the coverage of uh the populations, available populations by early warning systems in the next five years. So moving quickly forward, let let me just uh share with you a few data gaps that we are seeing, few issues rather, related to that. Firstly, seventy-five percent of the countries are reporting, which is great. Uh uh so that, which is, which you can translate more than seventy-five percent, actually, it's about a hundred and fifty-five countries um are reporting on 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 the SENDAI framework in in some year, on on some indicator. are reporting on, on, on the Sendei framework in, in some year, on, on some indicator or the other, right? However, there are, there are still, as you can imagine, forty countries that have, that are not, which are primarily from the Africa, Europe, Central Asia and the Caribbean areas. In terms of the targets, actually, target D and target F, that is the, the infrastructure loss and, and destruction of services on the target D and target F of international cooperation, they are the, they are the least reported. But also you'll be happy to know, Professor Animesh, that, that target A, which is about mortality and, and missing persons, is, is the highest reported, which is a good parameter for the avoidable deaths. So most of the countries are being able to report on, 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 on mortality and missing persons, which, which is a very good sign, so that we can do a more broader global analysis. The developing countries, especially the least developing, developing countries are facing challenges. And, and there is more focus needed for them to, to kind of be able to cover more and more indicators of, of the Sendei framework. Just to mention, under the seven targets, there are thirty eight indicators that has been approved by the UN General Assembly. So that's, that's something like, you know, approved and, you know, people may or may not like it as many times I hear. But that's something the UN and the member states have agreed to, the thirty eight indicators. Then lastly, one more important point is of disaggregation of data. And colleagues talked about this, talked about sex, sex and age and disability related data earlier in your session. And this is very important. The, 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 as far as the UN General Assembly's resolution is concerned, this has been mentioned as being encouraged, but not mandatory, let me put it this way. And that is primarily because of the capacities. We cannot expect all the countries in the world to have a similar capacity in, be able to cover such disaggregation. And hence, it has been kept as, you know, encouraged to the extents possible. And, and that's why the numbers are low, which is understandable. Even for target A, as I mentioned, for mortality and missing persons, the sex disaggregated, the data accounts for only about six point six percent of, of that data is, is disaggregated by sex disaggregation, which is the most common one. Moving on, and this is going to be my last, just last few points. And that is, there's some other issues of data quality, and that is one is on the interpretation of technical guidelines. As you can, as you would know, that there is still work ongoing on disaster logistics statistics. The, the UN again has the UN Statistical Commission, which is the apex body for statistics, overall statistics, be it economic statistic, population statistics, environmental statistics. The apex body within the UN has now mandated us and the, and the regional commissions, which is, you know, each region commission has their statistic divisions to come up with a common framework for disaster statistics. So that is still kind of a work in progress. And hence, all technical guidelines, guidelines right now is more of recommended in nature. And, and in the translation of that in the national context, because different countries could have, you know, their own methodologies. That has been one of, one of the issues, because, you know, different countries, there is, you know, there's recommended methodology, but not always the common methodology. Then talking about outliers, then we, we, when we get the data from the countries, and this is the official data that, that we receive, we, we see a number of outliers, and that's the analysis that we have to do and do have to go back to the countries to understand. The, the, these are real outliers, or they have been, you know, especially for the baseline, that there may be an, an event which went unreported in the international media, but was very important in the national context, and hence the numbers that may seem like outliers. So that's, that's an important part of the data quality check. Then retroactive reporting, retroactive reporting means the country today can decide to start reporting from, let's say, two thousand fifteen or even earlier. And that means that the numbers that have been provided could change over time. And that's, that's has an impact on the analysis that we do. And so, so it's, the countries are, have that privilege of being able to. So there's no closed date that you have to finish all the reporting for that year in, in a particular year. So you, you can actually go back and, and, and change and revise and update data. Which is good in one sense, because, you know, it's not always that countries can get all the data within a year, because they, they, some of the data is coming now from their, you know, states and provinces and districts, so it may take time. Then on economic clauses, that's one of the key issues that, that have been faced. From UNDP mentioned about, you know, the Dala methodologies and all. And that is, and that's been a great support to countries. But still, the value, evaluation of the physical loss and translating that into a cost estimation has been a challenge for countries. So, so this, this still is, you know, the, let's say, the, the order of magnitude of the physical loss is much greater than what is actually economatised or, you know, kind of estimated in terms of economic terms. And then one specific issue, of course, over the last couple of years, this pandemic reporting. We have, we look at pandemic as, of course, one of the national hazards among many others. And, and you would know that there are, recently, the International Science Council and UNDRR has come up with a very rigorous cataloguing of hazards, which go up to three hundred and two hazards, three hundred and two hazards which have been catalogued. And, and, and this being one of them, as you can say, a biological hazard. And, and countries are being supported to report against that on COVID. But that reporting has also been much under, undervalued, because, you know, countries have, have had their challenges in reporting the numbers. WHO, of course, has a very, very strong database on, on COVID reported, both mortality and effect. I, I will stop here. This is basically some of the key issues that I wanted to share with your audience today. But of course, I, I'm happy to answer any particular questions that, and it believes me. Thank you so much again.
Thank you so much, Mr. Sen Gupta. Right, okay, so yes, this is, we will open up our session for Q and A. So Hiduki, would you like to do the poll now, or would you like to do it after the Q and A?
Right, so I think it's better to have poll now, because some.
Okay, go on then.
You know, the participants, yeah, yeah, they want to leave. So, yeah, that is, yeah, okay.
So, yeah, so Mr. Sen Gupta, is that all right for to hang around for another five minutes? The poll will take literally two minutes and then we will.
No, I am around.
Questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Over to you.
Yeah, thank you very much. So with me, launch the second poll. So the second poll, I include just one question. Your participation is highly appreciated.
What is the response rate?
Sixty five percent over. Yeah, so let's wait a few.
Are you looking for seventy or eighty?
Seventy, yeah.
Seventy, okay. So in the meanwhile, we have two questions. Both are from Tom, from Anusha Manahill. And Tom, I think you're, it's not a question from you, it's just a comment, isn't it? So those, those two questions that we have received from Anusha Manahill. So may I request, Mr. Sen Gupta, Professor Rasul?
They're from Dr. Ahmed Aligo.
Oh, they're from Ahmed Aligo. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Ghul, Dr. Ghul. So I'm going to, actually, this is, the, the, both questions are really interesting and, and quite difficult ones. So we will ask the panel to share their perspectives, their opinions. So may I request all of you, one, and so if, if you could keep your answer brief. So we can start with Rasul, hi, then Samuel, then we'll go to Mr. Sen Gupta and to hear your thoughts. And I can read the questions to you once the poll is over. So Hiduki is the poll over now?
Yeah, I just.
One minute, Rasul, I just let Hiduki share the result and then.
Yeah, so now, yeah, you can see the result of the second poll. So, yeah, we can see, you know, the great progress, so, you know, the level of people's confidence of use of the idea of disaster and damage. Yeah, thank you very much for your participation. Okay, so Animesh, over to you.
Yeah, thank you very much. And the results, you know, the impact results, we always upload it on our special session page. Okay, so the question number one is on loss and damage fund at COP twenty seven. So how can this loss and damage fund be made accessible to the people of the affected communities who are affected the most and minimise elite capture as a result of poor governance in the vulnerable and affected states of the global south? Who would like to tackle this question?
Okay, may I start? Other can also join, contribute. This is a very, very interesting question and very encouraging question. Actually, this question may be many of our minds, but we don't have come so boldly. I think thanks for asking this question boldly. Of course, this is a issue, governance issue. How can we really, really minimise the elite capture? Particularly in our global south, we have seen that many of the resources, when it targeted to the, the poor and vulnerable community, it is very difficult to reach them. It is many people are captured by others. So here probably we needed, now we are discussing, probably the meeting will start from the March, the discussions to operational, I think the mechanism of the fund. I think we need to think about this aspect particularly, that so that it really goes to the people, affected people, vulnerable communities, not captured by the thing. So I think this is a, one of the major warning raised by this, that this should be one of the important aspects of our operational mechanism there. So I think this is a good time to ask this question. So because I think our next meeting will be the March, so I think this will be the one issue that currently we are asking discussion.
Okay, anybody else? And Mr. Sen Gupta, Samuel, if you would like to add?
I, if, I can, I mean, it probably, it's probably beyond my pay grade to delve into this, because we, we are statisticians, we are, we are data people. We, we, we try to gather information for policy, policymakers and govern, I mean, to do better governance. That's, that's our main aim. And what I can do is probably kind of share what, what is the ongoing efforts that are going towards, as, as, as firstly, you had heard last week in our loss and damage consultation. The main aim is to look at how do we estimate that? That's been a ma- major concern. And, and then it goes down to, you know, the, the, as, as Professor Russell also mentioned, that to see the governance and how to make, and kind of reach it, bring it to, to the most vulnerable and to the deserving. So this has been, we are in the UNDRR, along with UNDP and World Meteorological Organization, is coming up with, I would say, a new generation of disaster loss tracking system, which is primarily based on, as you may have heard, of the Descent Tower, which is a, a global system, which about a hundred and ten countries have been, have been following. The new thing about this would be that this is going to be with the member states. This is going to be, you know, kind of coordinated by the governments. And that, that's a very important one, because this is, because those, those, especially, those governments are the ones who are going to be, you know, in, in, in that consultation, that discussion, that dialogue that Professor Russell just mentioned. So they, they are the ones who would be probably leading that process. And, and this system would allow more and more national and local, and that's very important, local level, small to medium sized disasters to be recorded well, so that we have the actual figures of losses and not just the global numbers, which the international media, within its, you know, best of capacities is able to cover. And this would be really in the hands of, of the countries themselves and the government themselves to be able to report on a very regular basis. So this would go a long way in providing that, that real numbers, that, as, as you know, has been difficult. And in that, in that context, I, I just want to reiterate that the Sendei framework monitor, monitoring has been kind of acknowledged as one of a good matrices, because it's, it's globally approved with the, by the member states. And that, similar indicators are being looked at in, for example, in the global goal for adaptation, the process for the GGA, the global goal for adaptation as well. So these are small steps, but they're very important to kind of concretize what's the level of loss and damage that we are talking about, coming from the national and local levels, that could inform the consultation and discussions in very concrete terms, not just in normative terms, but in very concrete terms that Professor Russell just mentioned. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And very quickly, we'll take up Dr. Ghul's second question is, in the aftermath of two thousand twenty two floods in Pakistan, we have seen funds set up for DRR and climate adaptation being consumed and depleted for disaster response and relief. Instead of reducing vulnerability and risks, how can this be avoided? Who would like to answer?
Maybe I can, again, again, I can start. I, I think I, I would say this is even more interesting question, because this is a intellectual debate going on. Why should we give more focus on relief or rehabilitation or rather building capacity and building resilience? This is the debate. And in case of Pakistan, we have seen that, not only Pakistan, in most developing countries, we see that we are, we are more interested and focused on the response, particularly relief and rehabilitation. Of course, relief and rehabilitation important in the crisis moment, we have to do that. But if we really want to address loss and damage, we have to think proactively. That is why I think we have been discussing that, how can we, 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 we develop our, our capacity, building resilience of the vulnerable people, so that in the, they can minimise or avoid the loss and damage. And for that, we need to think about ahead, proactive planning before early, not responding after the event. Before early, how can we even, maybe require some cases relocation of the people? Some people are maybe living in a very high risk vulnerable areas. Probably there is no way you can manage that. In that case, probably you need to think about the rule location. Or otherwise, maybe changing even professional livelihood, if their livelihood is too much or vulnerable only the climate sensitive sector. If we want to build long term, the, the, avoid the loss and damage, we need to even change their livelihood for the climate sensitive, the less sensitive area. So that requires a long term planning, comprehensive risk management planning. Therefore, I'm giving some hints earlier in my presentation, and others also talked about that. Probably we need to think about more proactive, more early warning, more capacity building, health, education, all that early, so that they can move out of the climate sensitive sector. So I think the Pakistan example is a good example, but this is not only Pakistan, there are many countries we are telling this. But I think through the loss and damage fund, probably this will give us opportunity to think ahead, so that we can come up that, okay, we need to think ahead, need to develop need assessment, develop comprehensive plan, risk management plan. I think that will help us to building resilience and capacity and minimizing or abiding loss and damage. Thank you very much for this nice question.
Thank you, Gollam. Hi, Samuel, you want to answer? Go on.
Yeah, just to add on what Gollam mentioned about resilience building, I want to just give a practical example of what we are doing in Ethiopia currently. Actually, that, that has been the case also in many African countries, that most of our approaches has been more reactive than proactive. And now we are using resilience as a, as a concept, as, as, as an organisation. And now we are using resilience as a, as a concept, as an organizing concept for post-disaster recovery and linking it with sustainable development. So we, at the moment, I'm leading a team, a multi-dimensional team, a multidisciplinary team, to develop what we call a multi-year resilience strategy and investment plan for one of the disaster-prone areas. That has been systematically impacted by numerous events like droughts, floods, conflict and so on. So the multi-year resilience initiative uses what we call a systems approach to resilience building. And this systems approach also works with the concept that we call the humanitarian development and the peace nexus, all working with all these actors in a systematic approach, ensuring that humanitarian assistance actually helps build resilience. And also, you know, peace actors also work in a manner that strengthen resilience. So we have done this, and it's a concept that has bought, gained a lot of traction among the governments, including also the development partners to advance this. So we can share some experience with Pakistan to see how they can also borrow, learn from what we are doing on setting up a multi-year resilience initiative with some kind of a multi-year funding that has flexibility in terms of layering, short, medium and long term financing in one, in one pool. So, yeah, there's some experiences that we can share with you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Samuel. I know Paul, you have posed a question, I'm so sorry, we have run out of time. But what we'll do is that we will pick your question and send it round our expert panel, collect the answer and we'll post it on our website. So, so please don't feel neglected. We will, we will respond to your question, it's just that running out of time, because some of our colleagues are scattered all around the world, it's too late in some countries. So once again, I want to thank our esteemed speakers. Thank you to our very special audience. And I just want to say that this is, this is, this is our last special session for twenty twenty-two. Next year, we are going to spend quite a lot of time in India. And we will have a symposium and a series of consultations with key stakeholders related to reducing snakebite deaths. And above, we want to let you know that the Avoidable Deaths Network is launching a global campaign, which is about raising awareness on avoidable deaths. So on twelfth of March, which is Adian's fourth birthday, we are going back to Japan where Adian was launched. So our host, Dr. Hiduki Shirushita, has very kindly accepted an offer and will be launching them. We will be hosting the launch event, and we are calling that event an International Awareness Day for avoidable deaths. And we would also like to promote a strapline called Disaster Deaths Are Avoidable. And you are all welcome to attend the launch event, which is taking place in Kansai University in Umeda Campus in Osaka. We look forward to welcoming you and please continue to follow us, send us your advice, feedback, comments. So thank you for joining. So Hiduki, over to you, if you would like to say a few goodbye words. Thank you.
Now, thank you, Nivedita. Yes, yeah, thank you very much for all of the speakers and the participants to join this special session. Yeah, I enjoyed the session very much. And then, yes, as Nivedita introduced, we will have every big event coming March, Japan, in Osaka. So I think, yeah, so far, I'm not sure, but maybe it will be hybrid mode. So, yeah, even if you can't come to Japan, you can join virtually. Yeah, thank you very much.